Annie, if you could please call the roll.
Mayor Pollan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Setula, Councilman Smith.
Here.
Town Manager Hicks.
Here.
Alright, moving on to the approval of minutes, January 6th town meeting and January 22nd work session minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, the ayes have it, the minutes are approved and will be posted on the website. Onto reports of officers, boards and committees, first the permits report.
Building use and occupancy signed permits issued during the month of January 2020. Building permits, January 6th, MIR management for John Blandford Jr., 4730 Strauss Avenue, interior renovations and addition. January 6th, trend setters for John Garrett, 20 Oak Street, repairs after fire damage. January 13th, sustainable energy for Steven Alvez, 4 Pine Street, solar panels. January 14th, Jose Leon, 400 Indian Head Avenue, finished basement. January 16th, De Hart fence for Christie Savoy, 87 Riverside Run Drive for a fence. January 22nd, Heath Designs for PNC Bank, 1 North Prospect Avenue, light poles. January 23rd, Rainbow Construction, 9 Stewart Place, single family dwelling. January 23rd, renewable energy for Daisy Aloe, 2 Fair Hill Lane, solar panels. January 28th, Remodel USA for Francesca Kilbrew, 23 Lookout Drive for a deck. One use and occupancy permit, January 23rd, Robert and Penny Pool, 302 Bland Drive for a carport. No temporary use and occupancy permits, no demolition permits, no grading permits, no sign permits and no temporary sign permits.
Alright, thank you Annie, no finance report this month. Ginger is not here. Moving on to Town Manager Report, Code Enforcement and Planning Commission Reports.
Town Manager's Report, January 2020. Boardwalk, we've contacted a construction inspector, provided project plans and are waiting for a price quote. We still need, I'm sorry, to obtain the traffic permit, hire an inspector and schedule a pre-construction meeting. That will take place in the month of March. Restrooms on the Village Green, public awareness statement added to the town's website and posted the project notification at the Trailhead Plaza and inside the Village Green Pavilion. Zoning ordinance update, we are updating the zoning ordinance based on the town attorney's comments. The ordinance will be forwarded to the town council for review this month. Public hearing will be held before adoption. Lighting upgrades have taken place at the Pavilion, Senior Center, Town Hall and the Public Works Building. Leaf vacuum is over for the season. We still see folks putting their leaves out loose on the curb. Leaf vacuum is over for the season. Any additional leaves will need to be placed curbside on Wednesdays in a container clearly marked yard waste or within yard waste bags. Please, no plastic bags. And last but not least, paving repairs will take place to Pine Street, Indian Head Avenue, Dr. Mitchell and Bland Drive this month. Code Enforcement Report, January 2020. The town performed 14 rental inspections. The town issued a notice, I'm sorry, a total of 37 violations. Seventeen for rubbish, four for rental licenses and sixteen for property maintenance. The town also issued five citations, three for rubbish, two for property maintenance and the town also cleared 16 violations. Planning Commission Report, January 2020. The Planning Commission discussed the preliminary plan for Anchorage subdivision. A new motion was made to approve the plan as presented at the December meeting. The new motion was requested because it was found, following the December meeting, that per section 304 of the town zoning ordinance, the Planning Commission has the power to approve the plan without further approval from the council being required. The Planning Commission also discussed the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you Ryan. Moving on to the Bureau of Fire Prevention Report, Wayne.
Good evening everybody. Fire responses, this is reports for the month of January. We had 18 fire responses and 32 EMS calls, so it's definitely cold and flu season. Fire safety about your stoves, if you have a wood stove, pellet stove, try to keep it cleaned out during your heating weather, cold weather and also get your chimney cleaned once a year. This is the time of year we run a lot of chimney fires and a lot of times, if it's hot enough, it can burn through your chimney, if it cracks in your chimney, set your house, your attic on fire. So that's why it's important to get your chimney cleaned on a regular basis. Also, when you clean out your stove, the ashes, dump them or put them somewhere away from a structure, your house, to shed, nowhere near a property because they tend to flare up. If you have to store them close by, ideally put them in a metal bucket with a lid on it, that'll stop them flaring up too. Because we've had ashes piled up in somebody's garage, they thought it was out, next thing you know, the garage is on fire. So you have to be careful with that. But get a pro to clean your chimney at least once a year. Smoke alarms, we're still handing out, we're installing smoke alarms if needed, the new 10-year ones with lithium ion battery. You put it in and 10 years from now, you can take it off the wall, put another one back on. We're doing inspections, if you have one that's newer than, not older than 10 years old, you're okay, but if it's older than that, we'll help you change it out. If you buy one at the store, we'll help you install it. If anybody's requesting a smoke alarm, there's usually nobody at the station, but you can call Karen, call the Town Hall and ask for Karen and she can write it down and contact me or somebody else that takes care of the smoke alarms. And I don't think I missed anything. Jumping forward to March, March 8th, 2:00 AM. It's daylight saving time, so what they say, spring forward, right? So set your clock ahead one hour. And at that same time's a good reminder, check your batteries and your smoke alarm, at least the old types. And last but not least, Firehouse has a fundraiser. The auxiliary's having a drive-through chicken tender dinner lunchtime, February 24th and Monday, 11 to 1:00 PM. And it's featuring chicken tenders, macaroni cheese, coleslaw, dessert, soda or bottled water for the bargain price of eight bucks. Okay? And that's it. Anybody have any questions? Yep? Okay, thanks.
We have Community Affairs, Karen.
Good evening everybody. This Saturday is a Community Connections by United Way of Charles County Service pop-up. It's open to everybody in the county, county residents. Its special focus is on the western side of the county. There will be tax return preparations and they're by appointment only, but there are some appointments left. There's also going to be an Ask the Doctor, Ask a Lawyer for legal consultation. There'll be a food pantry, pet supplies giveaways. You can also ask a vet, veterinarian and various health department services and the mobile library will be here and, I'm trying, we just did the setup today. Anyway, it's all free, it's all free services, it's open to anyone. There are some dental appointments, they were focusing on senior citizens in the area. They did have four appointments left and they were opening them up to, you didn't have to be a senior citizen. So you can contact Elizabeth Farr at the United Way and this little flyer is back on the back table and it gives you all the information. But please come out and check everything out this Saturday, February 8th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM here inside the Village Green Pavilion. Also coming up, starting on February 15th, 10:00 AM in our Indian Head Senior Community Center, is Mindful Resilience Eight Week Program. It's a nine-week journey to physical and spiritual wellness and it is being hosted by Ms. Tiffany Daniel who is a veteran of the United States Army and she's suggesting that this be, it's for anyone but veterans, senior citizens, active-duty military and their families are invited to participate. Each class is 90 minutes and it focuses on developing skills that will help identify and cope effectively with the unique challenges that arise after any type of trauma, especially deployment and that, if left unattended, can linger for years. Mindful Movement is a yoga class designed specifically to complement integrative trauma treatment. Beginners are welcome and no previous experience in yoga is necessary. It is free and it's a, like I said, a nine-week program. However, they do ask you that you pre-register in advance and there's a, the website to go on and again, this flyer's on the back table as well. The Arnold House, community dinners have resumed and they're every Wednesday from 5:00 to 6:00 PM and it's open to anyone in the county who wants a hot meal. It's being hosted at the Metropolitan United Methodist Church up on, I think it's Livingston Road and Metropolitan, I'm sorry, Metropolitan Church Road off of either Livingston Road or no, is Ponfert Road called Livingston Road? Yes. No, not Ponfert, Livingston is past the Firehouse, I'm looking at you because, thank you. So it's off of Livingston that way or it's off of Indian Head Highway, that church, the connector road there, Metropolitan Church Road. And there's a flyer back there and there's, if you had any questions, there's a phone number on there to contact. The Charles County Parks Division is hosting their summer camp and activity fair. It will be at the Waldorf Senior and Recreational Center and it's Monday, March 9th, from 5:30 to 7:30. You can go there and plan your summer for your kids. There's camp providers and vendors that will be there and lots of fun things. Pre-registration is required and you can register online with Charles County Parks and again, that flyer's back there. Sorry, I'm a little out of order. On Monday, February 10th, in recognition of Black History Month in the month of February, the Charles County Public Library is hosting here in the Village Green Pavilion, a Brightstar Theater production of Let It Shine, the American Civil Rights Movement, 1955 to 1968. It's recommended for ages eight plus. The mobile library will be here as well. It starts at 6:30, it's free to the public and everyone is invited. And we're excited to have them come here and bring this program to the western side of the county. Also, the Community Activities Committee will meet Tuesday, February 11th and our new start time is at 6:30 here in the Village Green Pavilion and we'll be planning our 2020 events, starting with our Children's Spring Party and Easter Egg Hunt, which is Sunday, March 29th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM here in the building and outside on the grounds. It's for ages birth to 12 years accompanied by an adult. It is $2, all ages at the door, infants under one are free and military families are free with military ID. Everyone gets lunch, carnival and guessing games, the 4-H bunnies display, children's craft making, door prizes and the Easter Egg Hunt is for 15 years and under and we of course will have photos with the Easter bunny. And we are looking for volunteers, so anybody who would like to volunteer, please let us know, we can always use help. All of our events are run by volunteer organizations and individuals. Coming up on Saturday, May the 2nd, Taste of Indian Head will be here in the building and also on the outdoor grounds. We are expanding it this year for indoor/outdoor crafters and vendors and we're moving the Spring Craft Fair that we hold the first Saturday in April, we're moving it to this to expand it. We're going to have indoor and outdoor live entertainment, we're going to have local food trucks, businesses and organizations with displays and activities for the kids to do and so that's coming up and that flyer is also back there, a little save the date flyer for you. And that will be from 9:00 to 3:00. And then of course, we're celebrating our 100th anniversary of the town of Indian Head and that is on Saturday, September 26th. And that will be, right now it's 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, but we're fine tuning the, we do plan to have fireworks and obviously those will have to be later than 6 o'clock, so myself and the Town Manager are meeting with the fireworks guy tomorrow to discuss the logistics of that. And that is again on Saturday, September 26th and we're busy planning that and that flyer's on the back table as well. And that's it in a nutshell for me, I didn't give you all the 14 other events that we got going on. Anybody else, anybody have a question? Anybody want to volunteer, want to put your hand up so the camera guy can get you on camera so I can, I can hold your feet to the fire? Thank you.
Thank you Karen. Moving on.
Good evening everybody. Again, my name is Officer Hancock, I also answer to Mike. I work in the Community Policing Unit, I am not assigned to this area. I very rarely work on this side of the county, but I can go over in detail some things that plague this area, they plague the county and there are also problems nationwide that affect the quality of life. Some of the major issues that we have, I know I did some research, they're occurring here, kind of random, but we're going to cover those. Thefts from auto vehicles, from vehicles in driveways. A lot of these are crimes of opportunities. What we see most of the time is late at night, early morning hours, you've got juveniles, young adults or even older adults that are walking down the streets, walking in random driveways and pulling on a car door. If it's unlocked, guess what? They get to go in the car, rummage through it, if there's anything of value in there, they take it. A lot of times if the vehicle's locked, it's not an opportunity, so they move on to the next vehicles. Catch 22. If there are valuables that are visible inside the vehicle, GPS, bags, purses, money, people do do this, they'll smash a window. If they want to get in bad enough, they will smash a window. So you got to ask yourself, is it worth, you know, leaving valuables in the car, locking the car? Just make sure you're taking everything out of your vehicles. If you're not taking it out, put it somewhere where they can't see it, lock your doors, put everything in the trunk so they don't have that opportunity. Usually they want to be quick about business, check it out and move on quickly so they're not caught. Thefts of vehicles, it's winter time. We've had a pretty decent winter so far, but on the cold mornings, a lot of people want to go out, they want to start their car and warm them up. Big no-no. You can get a citation for it for one and the reason for that is because people like to take another crime of opportunity. Cars running, keys in, let me hop and take it for a joyride. It happens a lot, it's been happening at Waldorf a lot on cold mornings. People will take the car, they will use your car to go other areas and commit different crimes. I think right now we're working a case where they stole a vehicle and they went to a different neighborhood and started checking cars, see if they're open. So then they're dumping the cars. So if you got to start your car in the morning, if you have automatic start, great, you can lock the door, start it up and it can run like that, but if you're leaving the car unlocked, keys in the vehicle, it is illegal and it is a major concern because people do walk around checking, looking for that stuff. They know what they're doing. Moving on to thefts of packages, this has been a problem nationwide. When you're getting a package delivered, people are riding around neighborhoods in the middle of the day, following the UPS man, following the FedEx man, they're following the postal service and they're seeing these packages. And these people travel these neighborhoods a lot, so they know what cars belong where, if somebody's at work, they kind of pattern people and they can see. They don't know what they're taking, but they'll take it. If they want it, they'll keep it, they'll sell it, if it's nothing that interests them, they'll throw it out the window on the side of the road, it happens all the time. So to avoid these, if you're having packages delivered, you know you're not going to be home, see if you can have it go to your neighbor's house, talk to your neighbor, see if they can run over and pick it up for you. Have it delivered to the post office, have it go to the shipping company, that way you guys can go pick it up from there. I'm personally having this problem, my postal service person's been dropping my packages at my driveway, under the mailbox. I live a quarter mile off the road, can't see my driveway or can't see the mailbox in the house. Something you got to work on. So any packages that are coming, try to make sure, if you want to make sure they're safe, get your neighbors to pick them up for you or have them dropped off. Residential burglaries, these things happen most of the time during the middle of the day. The bad guys know that people go to work, they pattern them, see their cars leave every morning, they know when it's safe to go in. Very rarely does a burglary happen at nighttime because people want to avoid the confrontation of a homeowner being home. So these are crimes of opportunity, nobody's home, they'll go knock on your door, nobody answers, they'll go around back, kick the door in. Ways to prevent this, hide your property. A lot of people leave their garage doors open, when they get packages, they'll put their TV box out by the mailbox or the trash can so the trash can pick it up. Hey, they got a brand-new 80-inch TV, I might want to go grab that. Another thing that baffles me, I see this all the time, at nighttime, when you're inside having dinner, you're inside watching TV, close your blinds. Close your blinds, pull your shades down, because at nighttime, if I'm a bad guy, I can be standing two foot outside your window, I can see everything inside of your house. You look at the window, you have no idea I'm standing there, it's just the light difference. So at nighttime, put your blinds down because you wouldn't believe how many times I ride through a neighborhood, oh, they got a nice TV in there, oh, look at, I can see everything inside the house. People see that, they want to take advantage of the situation where you're not at home. So do what you can to safeguard your property, don't advertise what you have so people come looking for it. Destruction of properties, there's juvenile activity, people go around spray paint and stuff, minor, you know, damage to the playgrounds and stuff like that. It is a quality of life issue, so if you're seeing these kinds of things, you need to contact the sheriff's office and we'll come out and we'll handle it. We now have a camera program, if anybody has security cameras, which is the hot lick now. If you don't, I recommend getting one because it captures a lot of evidence. We have a program that anybody that has Ring, Arlo, any of these other camera systems for home security, we have a program where you can register these cameras through the sheriff's office. This does not give the sheriff's office access to be able to go into your camera system and spy on you or see what you're doing or have any remote access whatsoever. Basically what it is, it's the registry that's letting us know. Let's say if there's a crime that happens on Madley Avenue, we're looking for evidence. We can go on this registry and say, oh, well this address right here, they have cameras registered with us, let's go knock on their door and see if they have any evidence on their video that could be helpful in solving a crime. So if you guys do have cameras, it'd be great if you could register them, it is a very, very useful tool and it gives us, gives us that information that much faster. And the totality of all these crimes, you guys live in a community, how many people, show of hands, how many people know their neighbors? How many people speak to their neighbors daily? No phone numbers? Okay. You need to have your neighbors looking out for you, because I can tell you as a patrol officer, as a community officer, when I'm driving through the neighborhood, I can ride by your house and see two guys standing on the front porch and more than likely, I'm going to wave to them, hey guys, how are y'all? Because even though I work a community, I'm not there to know who belongs and who does not belong. So chances are, me stopping, somebody just standing on the front porch is not very likely. If your neighbors are watching out for you, they're going to say, well, we don't recognize them and they're, the homeowner's supposed to be at work. Contact the sheriff's office. Police officers aren't magic, we can't just solve crimes just by preaching up in the air, we really need the public's help providing the information. You guys provide the information, we can follow up on leads and stuff like that and it's very beneficial. We need you guys to do our job efficiently. Does anybody have any questions? And I will touch, going back a little bit, on January 6th, 2020, the pharmacy across the street was robbed. Our detectives did an amazing job and they have made three arrests in connection with that robbery and several other pharmacies in the county. I can't give much detail because it's still an ongoing investigation, but we've got three of the guys that were responsible. Any questions? Hopefully Corporal Curtis will be back to work soon. If you guys have any community-related issues that need to be addressed with him, you can use his email. If you don't have his email, Karen can provide that information for you, contact Karen. Obviously, if it's an urgent police matter, call 911, call the non-emergency number. If it's something that can wait, that Corporal Curtis can address, shoot him an email and he should be in contact with you, hopefully he's back soon. No questions? Alright guys.
Thank you. Alright, moving on, we have no briefings tonight, no presentations or recognitions, no resolutions. We do have an ordinance for adoption, an ordinance concerning the acquisition of the Henderson property. Annie?
Ordinance number 01-01-20, introduced by mayor and council. It was introduced at the January 6th meeting. Date adopted is set for this evening, date effective would be February 23rd, 2020. An ordinance concerning acquisition of Christopher C. Henderson Revacable Living Trust for the purpose of authorizing and approving the town's purchase of certain property owned by the Revacable Living Trust of Christopher C. Henderson dated November 16th, 2016, under certain terms and conditions. The town of Indian Head has the opportunity to purchase from Timothy P. Henderson Senior, trustee of the Revacable Living Trust of Christopher C. Henderson dated November 16th, 2016, for public purposes, the two parcels of land and improvements located adjacent to the Potomac River on Henderson Lane in the town of Indian Head, consisting of 5.05 and 3 acres, more or less. The town council expects the town's acquisition of the property will entice and attract economic development along with Potomac River waterfront in the town of Indian Head and will allow the town to develop plans for possible future extension of the existing boardwalk in coordination with waterfront development. The town and Henderson have negotiated an agreement of sale for the town's purchase of the property, a copy of which the town council has reviewed and is on file in the office of the town clerk. The town council considers this purchase to be in the interests of the town and its residents and by this ordinance desires to authorize and approve the agreement of sale and purchase of the property. Being enacted by the council of the town of Indian Head, that the council of the town of Indian Head authorizes and approves the agreement of sale and the town's purchase of the property in accordance with the terms of the agreement of sale and authorizes and directs the town manager, the town clerk and other town officials and employees, as necessary, to execute the agreement of sale on behalf of the town and take all further actions required to consummate the purchase of the property and ratifies, confirms and validates the execution and delivery on behalf of the town of any documents heretofore executed on behalf of the town in furtherance of the purchase of the property as authorized by the ordinance. Be it further enacted, that this ordinance shall become effective at the expiration of 20 calendar days after its approval by the council.
Any questions? Okay.
Seeing no questions, Mr. Mayor, I move we accept the ordinance as read.
I second it.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and the ordinance is approved. Alright, moving on to petitions, we have none. Unfinished business, the anchor at the elementary school. We, or Karen sent us an email mid-January and confirmed that Charles County Public Schools' wishes to have the anchor remain on display at its current location at Indian Head Elementary School. That's just to provide an update. Alrighty. New business, commercial vehicle parking. We kind of talked about this last meeting and we're just seeking public input about potential resolutions to commercial vehicle parking. We don't, I mean, Ryan, I'll let you take it, but we don't have really a general idea, we're just kind of seeking public input onto what we think may be good areas to kind of do it, but I mean, what does our ordinance currently?
Currently it's a violation. So, right now we're looking into possible locations where large commercial vehicles could park overnight. That's something that council brought up and suggested and possibly are looking into, but currently it is a violation and it is treated as such.
Right, being it so that we have a community where a lot of people commute, a lot of people are truck drivers, we want to allow them to park legally, but we do have a constraint because we don't want to be responsible for their vehicles if they get damaged or anything like that, so we're working with council. But we like to provide some means in which individuals can earn a living and not have to move out of the town to park their vehicle. So we, further discussion will, we'll have further discussion and try to come up with something, but if you have any ideas on an area, it would have to be town-owned unless we can get a landowner to agree to let them park there. So we do have some areas, Ryan, could you give some details on the areas that we, that are town-owned that we could potentially use?
Some of your possible areas would be your parks, your Village Green, your Madley Parks. Those would be some of the possible areas, but you, we have to think about the fact that it could still be considered an eyesore for the neighboring communities, i.e. the appearance, the noise, the fumes, so there's just a lot of things to look at as it relates to commercial parking in the town of Indian Head.
So Karen may be best suited, when you get calls on vehicles that are illegally parked, that are commercial vehicles, could you give us a ballpark? Is it less than 10?
It's less than 10.
Less than 10.
Less than 10. What about the size of the vehicles? Are you talking about tractor trailers or what are you talking about?
Karen, are there tractor trailers? I know I've seen, you know, the part of the truck that pulls the truck, I don't know what you call that.
We've had it all, we've had, we've had tractor trailers, we've had box trucks, we've had vehicles used for bread deliveries, I mean, we've had it all, so it ranges in size from something as small as a commercial van all the way up to a tractor trailer.
Right. So it's just something to consider, right? It's less than 10 vehicles, these are people, these are your neighbors, trying to earn a living, just trying to find a place where they can park legally. Right? Because if you have a, if you work for a water company and you drive a little vehicle, that's still an illegally parked vehicle. Is that correct, based on the ordinance? Or no?
I'm not sure what you mean by a water vehicle.
So if you have a vehicle that has, I don't know, peerless water on the side, right? Collagen water and that's a commercial vehicle, if that's parked in their driveway, that in fact is illegal?
It depends on the size and whether it's used for carrying freight and all that good stuff, there's all kinds of variables to the ordinance, so.
Okay, can we publicize the ordinance so we can have the, that section of the ordinance so we can have?
Ordinance is on the website, we can also have copies available at the Town Hall, but it is a commercial ordinance.
Can you just give me the section then? I don't want to have to look through the entire ordinance to find that section because you're getting into nuance, we're trying, there's less than 10 vehicles that we're trying to provide a space to park and now we're here- and now we're hearing that there are a broad range of nuances, so I, I just want some insight so we can make an informed decision. Wayne?
Okay. Vehicles, about the emergency vehicles trying to get down some of these narrow streets.
So by doing this, that'll help, it should help prevent those things.
Okay, okay. I'm done.
But we're trying to remedy some of these things by making, these streets are already narrow, right? We have some individuals who want us to put a line down Mattingly Avenue because it, it just is so narrow, right? So if you have, if you don't find a mechanism, people are going to do what they have to do. So I'm just soliciting some ideas to give less than 10 vehicles a place to park legally.
And I think we can identify town-owned, you know, land and, and kind of research and see what would be amenable and then maybe present that at the next meeting. And then see if there's any other opportunities available as well. But, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is the Velocity Center owned by the town?
No.
Officer Hancock just had a great suggestion. If maybe we want to put something on Facebook and on our website and ask the, these vehicle owners to maybe put in a, you know, an information sheet to us, letting us know what they're trying to park and that kind of thing, just to.
Great idea.
To get the ball rolling.
You could be opening Pandora's Box and, really, this is not my business, but you could be opening Pandora's Box. Okay, commercial vehicles are allowed. Well, then guess what? My cousin that's going to stay with me for a week is going to bring his stuff in. I think that if you guys have, for the town residents, have an application permit, hey, okay, I work for this company, I live at this address, this is the vehicle that I'm going to be driving.
Right.
You guys approve or deny whether, you know, weight or, you know, where you guys determine you're actually going to park it. But I would, just a suggestion, this is, this is your show, application, because if you open it up completely for commercial vehicles, there'll be a lot more commercial vehicles here than just 10 of them.
Right. All right, no, that's a very good suggestion.
I, I know that the issue originally was about a semi that was over in one of the adjacent neighborhoods. The concern that I have as a homeowner on Mattingly is that when we have tournaments, which we're coming into tournament season, there is no parking down in Mattingly Park. That, I mean, none.
Right.
So I, I would just caution that we be really judicious about that because what tourism we have, we want to keep and we want to make them happy. We don't want to have them arguing with even a resident-owned, you know, vehicle down there.
Right.
I, I get it, but it's, that's lifeblood for our town.
Absolutely.
Is this a particular area of town or, I know it, once in a while, we see one on McWilliams, but have, the council have people come to them who own trucks and say, hey, I can't park, so I can't live here in town? Have you had that happen?
I have not, no.
How about you, councilman?
The, one in, there's, there's a semi truck that does get once in a while parked in the River Watts Drive in that area. The person who drives that does live in that community. And then, but we have reached out, the town manager has reached out and have, at one point last year, they did put up a notice saying he is not supposed to be parking in there. And for a brief period of time, he disappeared, but still, once in a while, the gentleman pops up with, with a semi truck. So I don't know if he has reached out to the town directly with regards to whether it's inconveniencing him, but he has found a way, one way or the other, to somehow park in different locations around the town.
Ryan, I would think this would apply to commercial vehicles parking on town streets, not on your private property. Your driveway is your private property.
Yes, but that, that is still part of the violation, you still can't park. You can't, you can't bring a large truck home and park your large truck.
A large truck, but I'm talking about, like, councilman Smith, that about panel trucks, electric, you know?
Oh, no, I, I don't think we get into a little small van. Our biggest issue are, are bark, excuse me, box trucks and tractor-trailers.
Is that what your, is that what the ordinance says?
I, I'm trying to find out, ordinance here, searching through the what's the name here and it just says vehicles used for carrying freight, that kind of thing.
I think school buses are included.
School buses, as long as they, here's a way, a workaround as it relates to the school bus. It needs to be moved within the hour. So what do most school buses do? They, they just take them, move them for an hour and bring them back. So now the clock starts again. So that's how they've gotten around hour ordinance as it relates to that.
Maybe you need to look at the ordinance and kind of modify it to address the issue.
And I think as long as it's not impeding, you know, the fire department's or sheriff's department's, you know, ability to respond to any sort of emergency situation and it's not on town streets blocking up anyone's accessibility to, you know, their own property or, you know, in emergency situations. I mean, I think that's something that we can look at, but as ordinance is currently written, you know, I, I think maybe we can do a little bit of changing there. But that's something, you know, we can talk about and present again and then see what we come up with. All right, any other comments?
No.
All right. Moving on to miscellaneous announcement of upcoming meetings. At the United Way, Community Connection, Community Connection Service pop-up Saturday, February 8th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Village Green Pavilion. Charles County Public Library's Black History Program will be Monday, February 10th, 6:30 p.m. at the Village Green Pavilion. Community Activities Committee, Tuesday, February 11th, at new time, 6:30 p.m. at the Village Green Pavilion. Town Hall, Community Affairs and Public Works will be closed in observance of President's Day. Monday, February 17th, no trash pickup. Planning Commission will meet Wednesday, February 19th, 5:30 p.m. at the Village Green Pavilion. Town Council Work Session will be Wednesday, February 26th, 3:30 p.m. Town Hall. And Town Meeting will be Monday, March 2nd, 7:00 p.m. at the Village Green Pavilion. That is it for the announcement of upcoming meetings. Now we have citizens' comment. If anyone has a comment or a concern, please approach the pro, po, uh, man, I am struggling today, guys. The podium, please approach the podium and state your name for the record and then your